Welcome to the August 20th, 2025 School Committee Meeting. Item 1.1, District Vision and Core Values. District Vision. The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core Values. In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment. We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration. We work together while keeping student needs at the center of all decision-making. Community. We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Item 1.2, Video or Audio Recording of Meeting. This School Committee meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence Item 1.3, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item 2.1, Public Comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. Public comment at a Barnstable School Committee meeting is limited to Town of Barnstable residents and taxpayers, and Barnstable Public Schools employees, students, or family members. Speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material and must begin their comments by stating their name and town. An extension of the speaker's time may be granted at the discretion of the Chair. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The Committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item to be placed on a future agenda. The Chair will also allow public comment at her discretion during the meeting. Is anybody here for public comment? Seeing no one, public comment is now closed. Item 2.2, School Committee and Subcommittee Liaison Reports. Facilities Committee, Jen?
I have nothing to report.
Policy.
Point of information. Has everybody from the Facility Subcommittee been afforded an opportunity to speak?
So, as we discussed last month, the School Committees Subcommittee and Liaison Reports are brief reports to update on what has happened at a meeting that's occurred, and the Chair of that Subcommittee or the person who is the liaison will be giving the report.
Once again, as was discussed at last meeting, if all members of a Subcommittee are not afforded the opportunity to speak, Chair, you are aware that you are risking state and local violations of our open meeting laws. So, as was discussed, will we be allowing everybody to speak, or do we want to risk a possible violation of our policies? Because there's no policy relative, and I just want the community to be aware, just why we're having this conversation. Because, you know, the restriction of an elected official's right to speak during a topic, you know, it's kind of a serious matter. And, so I'll let you make the final decision, but if everybody's not allowed to speak, we may be, and I'm rather confident that it is a violation that will be reported and then followed up on. So will every member of the Facility Subcommittee be allowed to speak?
Jen, was there a Subcommittee meeting between July and August?
There was not, yeah.
So, since there's, there was no Subcommittee meeting held, there is no report for that committee. You may speak during your Subcommittee.
There's information.
School Committee members may speak to any topic he or she desires during School Committee Member Comments. The purpose of the School Committee Report is to provide a report on a meeting that was held. Since there was no meeting held, it wasn't there. The Chair of the Subcommittee can defer to a different Committee member to provide the report, or if the Chair of the Subcommittee forgot something, somebody can speak. But nobody's freedom of speech is being curbed and no policies are being, have been violated. So, I would ask that you can continue this topic during your Subcommittee Member Comments, but there's, right now, we're in Subcommittee Reports. There is no report because there was no meeting.
Point of information, point of order. Again, the fact that there wasn't a meeting does not mean that there's not information relative to the Subcommittee that the public needs to hear, which there is. Add on to that, the central question here is whether every elected official who participates in an activity has the right to speak. That's what we are going back and forth. And so, again, I would strongly encourage the allowance of every Subcommittee member who's on the Facility Subcommittee, who may have something to report, because there is, there are things happening all the time that the Town needs to be informed of, to speak.
But you didn't have a meeting, so what do we?
Jen, go ahead, Jen.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so first of all, we didn't have a meeting. In the future, if you want to do the, I'm more than happy to let you do it. It's fine with me. I have no, I have absolutely no ownership over it at all. It's just that the way the order normally works is that the Chair is the one that reports. I am more than happy to give you that, but I'm not done. But then also, you're, the reason that your comments are not being curbed is because you can say anything you want relative to Subcommittee stuff, because we haven't met, you can say it under the, the School Committee Member Comments. That's what she's saying. So no one's curbing, curbing your right to speak, and I certainly would never intend to take that from you. It just doesn't go in this bucket. It goes in the next bucket.
Thanks, kid. I appreciate that.
Just a minute, Peter.
What I was.
Andre, please. Peter, did you want to speak? You started to speak.
No, Jen said it well. I, there's, Andre can speak all he wants during School Committee time, but this, we're reporting on meetings, various committees, and there wasn't a meeting, so.
Mike?
So I think you're wrong. I'm going to come out and say it, because the reason I think you're wrong is, if we didn't have a spot, what's the, you're saying a catch-all bucket? The catch-all bucket is School Committee Comments, which is the next one down, which is what Jen said. So if Jen wants to give the report on this, if you want to talk about Subcommittee stuff, it's further on down the road. If we didn't have that, then I would actually agree with you that, like, you've got to be able to speak about what you want to be able to speak about, right? But the fact that we have the catch-all that says that, I completely think you're 100% wrong. I don't think it's my, an open meeting violation, law violation, because we have the catch-all bucket, next one down, and says School Committee Comments, which can be about anything, including your facilities, including about anything else, anything else you want to talk about. So because of that, I believe, I kind of think this more is threatening, and I think it's not 100% accurate. I asked you last month for the state law, and I asked you for the policies, and you kind of very generally went over that. You didn't give me specific state law that I could look up, and you didn't give me specific policies or specific state statutes. So I ask you again, if you have it written down that you want to give me the state statutes and the, I will look into it. And I, but I also think because we have the catch-all one down below, so you can't talk in this one, but you can talk in the next one about everything you want.
Policies.
Again, point of order.
Just a minute, there is no point of order. I'm going to ask that we just quickly continue with the Subcommittee Reports, and we're down to Item 2.3, Subcommittee Comments, in about a minute, and you may speak during that time. So the Policy Subcommittee Meeting, Subcommittee met on August 11. In addition to the cell phone and the homework policies that appear later on tonight's agenda, we discuss the three policies that are related to the School Committee Meetings. Policy BDB, School Committee Officers. Policy BEDB, Agenda Format. Policy BEDD, Rules of Order. The Committee Members discussed it. It was determined that there are no revisions needed, that the policies are clear and are being adhered to. We also briefly mentioned Policy IKF, Graduation Requirements and Competency Determination in the framework that these policies are impacted by recent DESI notices and will be reviewed at the next Subcommittee Meeting on September 1. MASC also recently distributed its annual policy update newsletter. There are a number of policies that are listed with recommended changes, and we will review those as we have done in the past. Next item is Cape Cod Collaborative Liaison. And Andre?
Thank you, Chair. The Collaborative, which is one of the two Subcommittees that I'm on currently, will reconvene our meetings in September. Dr. Hope Hanscom, who has come on board, has done a good job thus far, and I look forward to getting back in September and looking at the matters that we have to discuss. Again, I apologize to the community that I'm not able to speak to, my other role on the Facility Subcommittee, and the important work that's planned specifically in the Town of Barnstable. I've heard from community members relative to their concerns about the prospect of building a new school in Barnstable, which I wanted to talk to the Subcommittee, to the community about, but because of.
Point of order.
Yeah.
We can do that in the next thing that says School Committee Comments.
All right. Wellness Committee, Mike?
We did not meet. I have nothing to report.
Item 2.3, School Committee Comments. Before I open the School Committee Comments, I just wanted to recap last month's discussion where I had suggested a three-minute time limit. Although this has, the Chair does have the right to put some time limits on School Committee Agenda Items. We have done that in the past, especially with our guest speakers. We provide a time framework. I am not going to move forward with that since the rest of the Committee is concerned. I do want to make sure that we are respectful of staff who are required to be at School Committee Meetings after working all day, and for guests who join us, and I urge School Committee Members to be mindful of their time as they speak. So I'll start with Jen.
I do have a question. I know we're discussing the cell phone policy later. Will we have an ability to speak to it then as well, or should I put my comments in now?
Absolutely can speak to the cell phone policy.
Later on.
Later.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have plenty of time.
Then I'll wait. Thank you.
Peter?
I kind of had the same question as Jen. I know we have cell phone policy on the agenda later. I, I know the, you know, we made a couple of common sense policies, cell phone policy and homework policy. I'm wondering if, like, something like the yonder pouch can be part of a conversation during that cell phone policy, or is that kind of a budget item and?
Yeah, it was, so the yonder pouches are tied to the cell phones. You know, you can speak about anything that's related to the cell phone policy. There was not a specific agenda item or finance item related to yonder pouches at this time, but you can certainly.
All right, yeah, I'll speak to it if it, it's part of the conversation.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Andre?
Thank you, Chair. I'll start, as we've been talking, about my lack of opportunity to speak vis-à-vis my role on the Facility Subcommittee, about what's taking place this summer, conversations that I've had with both community members and also representatives of our Town Council that I wanted the public to be aware of, and I'm going to be pushing that this Facility Subcommittee takes quite seriously when we have our next meeting in September. Many people in the Town are aware about the situation concerning our aging buildings and the conversation and movement to building a new school, as that has been the case for essentially every other school district on the Cape. Within that conversation, there's been much talk and work, frankly, relative to a new school building in Hyannis, to consolidate two of the existing school buildings in, in Hyannis. What I wanted to note and speak to is, the conversation then would be, what do we do if we consolidate two school buildings and they're placed on the site of one of the school buildings? What takes place with the other school building? What are we going to put there? And you hear a lot of talk in the Town and in general about housing, 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 we need housing, so on and forth. What I want to add to this conversation, based on feedback that I've heard from the community, is that there is, you know, people feel that housing in Hyannis particularly has reached a limit. And the prospect of providing any further housing, whether it be workforce, residential, whatever the case may be, it may be cumbersome if that's the direction that the School Committee ultimately want to go to. I was behind that idea, because we need housing, and we certainly need workforce housing, but the feedback that I've been getting, that I feel people, you know, is that if we did move forward, because there's still much work to be done in terms of a new building, and we were looking at what to do with the other school building as other communities have done, I'm thinking about Morrison's Mills Elementary School. The idea of housing will have, I feel, some further loops to go to through, based on when I've received, the feedback that I've received from the community and also members of the, the Town Council. I want to speak to the idea of artificial intelligence. We're going to have a conversation about cell phones. I've heard much feedback about that, and it's an important conversation to be having. But I think our district needs to take a good, hard look. I advocated for an agenda item at this meeting, actually, looking at the impacts of artificial intelligence, and how that's not going to just impact education, but also the job markets going forward. What's the point of our best and brightest students studying coding, doing outstanding, going on to a leading university right here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, getting a degree in coding, and then having no job for all the work that they've done? These are the types of articles and information that's coming out that I'm hearing, and I, you know, we're talking about cell phones. It's an important conversation, okay? But that horse is not only out of the barn, it's been out of the barn, and it's not what's coming. So I, the cell phone conversation and how it's impacting us, it's very important, we need the students to be focused, so on and forth. Artificial intelligence is what's on the front doorstep. Everybody already has a cell phone. We are going into this age of artificial intelligence, and the prospect of our hard-working students, many of them are most high-achieving students, working so hard to get degrees for jobs that were supposed to be safe in technology, in fields like coding, and then having nowhere to go after that? I think this is something that we need to be aware of and then kind of be proactive about kind of having these conversations. We're certainly already having the conversation about how artificial intelligence affects instruction. I'm a teacher. A student writes a beautiful five-page paper with no mistakes whatsoever. An eighth grader, zero. I'm thrilled. But did you write that paper yourself? I mean, perfect, absolutely flawless, not that you're, okay? So that's one conversation, but I feel another conversation is about the disruptions, the coming disruptions, some that are already happening to our job market, and how we can prepare students accurately, effectively, for the world that they're going to be going into. I also want to speak to pending policy, and I'm going to have some further questions about this, as it's something that I've spoken to, and people have, you know, sometimes said, you know, and I'm, we're talking about mascots, you know, there's other things, and why are you talking about this? Sometimes even my colleagues have that point of view. But the State of Massachusetts is talking about this. There's a bill, S312-H575, that would like to ban Native American mascots statewide. It's a proposed bill that's currently on the floor, and there's articles being written about, and it's, it's being discussed. This is a conversation that I've been trying to have in this town for over a year and a half, relative to our mascot now, the Red Hawks, previously, the Barnstable Red Raiders. Been trying to have a conversation, because many school, many people in the community are asking me simple questions, like, hey, Andre, we're playing the North Quincy Red Raiders in the MIAA State Tournament in football, and everybody's fine with it. Why exactly weren't we allowed to be the Red Raiders? By the way, we've played the Quincy North Raiders, we've played the North Quincy Red Raiders twice in the state football tournament these last couple years, so these questions keep coming in. I'm trying to have this conversation, an agenda item, a Subcommittee, and as far as I'm concerned, I've faced resistance on that point. Nonetheless, I'm undeterred. It is true that the North Quincy, that North Quincy, a high school that we play, they are the Red Raiders. There's other, there's five other schools in the state that are currently the Red Raiders, and they might find themselves within this legislation. We've moved, of course, to the Red Hawks. That's our mascot. It's great. The kids are behind it. Wonderful. But I have serious concerns about, and which, what I'll get to going forward in this, in this meeting, are the kids even learning about the decades upon decades of tradition of the Barnstable Red Raiders? Or is that something that's being swept under the rug? We'll discuss that going forward. But I want the, I want the community to be aware, this is pending legislation, possibly our Superintendent will speak to it, that's on the floor. There may be implications for Barnstable. I don't know if the Red Hawk, if the Hawk itself would fall under this designation, but other communities, most certainly, Dartmouth, the Indians, who decided to stay, the Indians, the community writ large made the decision to remain, the Indians, Braintree, the Womps, the community writ large, as in everybody, including alumni, made the decision to remain, the Womps. They're likely going to be having these conversations. I'm hoping that we can have a conversation, because it's something that's important to many people here in Barnstable going forward, and kind of, right? The point of a mascot is to bring people together. It's a point, to bring people together, not to make a decision and to end all debate once we have graduates, minorities, people to take part in that, that conversation. Thank you.
Mike?
I'm trying to think if I have anything. I don't think I do. I don't, I have questions, but you guys kind of brought it up, but I'll talk about it in our two, it was a lot what both of you said about the cell po, cell phone policy, but I'll just wait till then. So I'm all set. Thank you.
On Saturday, August 2nd, I attended the Asian American and Pacific Islanders Commission's Community Listening Session in Eastham. Just for a little background, Barnstable has 202 students in the district that are identifying as Asian American, so I was interested in learning more, as this is one of the 36 nationalities of students in our district. There were 21 people in attendance. They shared their experiences, challenges, and ideas for building stronger support and representation for AAPI communities on the Cape. I found it very interesting to learn about their backgrounds, cultural traditions, and connections to Cape Cod. We discussed struggles related to their feelings of isolation and belonging, brainstormed some ways to change the narrative and broaden community awareness, discussed systematic changes and possible solutions, and we also discussed barriers related to health and social equity, housing, and economics, and collected some, the collection of accurate racial and ethnic data. Information was shared. They're looking for getting the word out, anybody who's interested in attending these listening sessions, they can reach out to, Sarah has some information that I provided her about the meeting, they can reach out to me, and hopefully we'll be seeing more of this. It was a wonderful group of people from a variety of Asian backgrounds, so it was great. I did have the notes from the meeting posted in Board Docs for people who want more details, and for any community members who may want to get involved or more connected with the Item 2.4, Superintendent.
Point of order. Chair, if everyone spoke, and I did have slides.
Go ahead.
If everyone's had the opportunity to speak. Thank you. Again, in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, Committee Members are given the chance to speak twice during any agenda item, should they choose to speak, so I want to make the community aware. As we say, a Barnstable is a large, it's a diverse, and there's, it's a dynamic district, so even in the summer, there's much that has been going on that our students, our staff members, our families have been participating in, that I want the community to be well aware of. So at West Villages, the Jump Start Kindergarten 2025 Group met in preparation for the upcoming school year. Heard a good amount of positive feedback, some friends, their children participated in this group, and they spoke very well of it. So this is the Jump Start Program for our kindergarten students. Kids Day took place at Barnstable High School last week, hosted by the Barnstable Police Department and attended by many children and campers from across the town. It was a great event. I got a chance to be there. Number of the leisure programs run by the Barnstable Rec took part in it, as well as anybody in the community or joining communities, and it was outstanding. So this is retired Barnstable Police Piper, Dave Cameron, that's leading the parade, followed by graduates of the Youth Police Academy. A procession of police and fire equipment lead the opening parade at our annual Kids Day. I'm getting a chance to see some of the heavy equipment. Barnstable Police Department Officer Brian Morrison, who works in our schools as well, swears in members of the Youth Police Academy after their summer-long program. He's our new members and possible law enforcement officials going forward. Food was provided at the event, free of charge, so they got a chance to get hot dogs, so on and forth, there at the event. This is Barnstable Fire Department's Colin Sylvester, who helps kids escape a simulated fire at the fire safety training. Very important information. West Barnstable Fire Department's Sienna McEnery joins forces with junior firefighter nine-year-old Anna Ravello in a water competition. West Barnstable Fire Department member Katie Kerwin, who is also a member of our 2007 Girls State Championship Team. She's a nominee for our Barnstable Athletic Hall of Fame, so it was great to see Katie. She's helping Quinn Boger aim a hose at the contest during the Kids Day. See here, Smokey the Bear, how could I forget Smokey the Bear? Works with the crowd during Kids Day. Let me find my place. A Cape SWAT team member, Chris Lobiano, helps 10-year-old Nathan Veterino into perspective gear at the demo tent. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I got that wrong. I apologize. That's the prospective tent. It's my fault. This is a student getting their badge, excuse me, and this is, as I always said, the protective The students get a chance to ride the state police boat here. I've found my place. That was on display, and I've gotten my place. I apologize for that previous slip-up. This is Barnstable Police Department's Kevin Fulham and his dog sniffing dog, Voney, that make their way down the line of volunteers during the canine demonstration. And Barnstable Police Department's John Gardner plays the bad guy as Officer Nolan O'Malley, and Dog Alex stops his escape during a canine demonstration. So this was Kids Day at Barnstable High School, and it was a great event for all involved. Soap suds and. Soap suds and fun for our BIS student. These are students that are gaining money, uh, for the next trip to Washington DC, starting early with the car wash. Very good to see, outstanding field trip. Not to be outdone, members of our Barnstable football team, uh, hosted car washes at mobile gas station in Osterville on August 9th and August 10th, uh, raising money for their upcoming season. This is the football team and also the cheer team taking place, taking part, excuse me, in the car wash. Congratulations to the newest members of the class of 2025. Uh, at our summer graduation, on a beautiful Monday evening, we gathered to celebrate our amazing graduates for their outstanding achievements, uh, attended by family and friends, had the opportunity to be in attendance, and it was a great event. Congratulations to these members of the class of 2025. The Barnstable leadership team spent a three-day, uh, action-packed three days this week strategizing for the year ahead, from developing instructional commitments to planning key improvement initiatives. Uh, we are ready to hit the ground running. And I was glad to see, um, we dove deep, we meaning they, the leadership team into strengthening our safety measures, collaborating with local community partners on standard response protocols and standard reunifications procedures. An important part, very important part of this leadership retreat, along with team building and all of our happy staff, ready to go. Um, a couple of things for the community to be, uh, aware of. This was a workshop that took place that our teachers had the opportunity to participate with, uh, through Bridgewater State University, our newer teachers. And I, I bring this up just because, again, I've been teaching for, for 15 years now, so kind of in the midway part of the journey. But for our newer teachers, um, a number of things, classroom management of certainly, uh, becomes part of the school community, uh, but practical uses of AI as a teacher, uh, very important. Not the only thing, uh, but I'm glad to see that our teachers are being trained, um, in what's happening now and where we are going forward. Today, first day for to pick up bus passes. Um, sure? Can you believe it? Next Wednesday, a week from today, we're going to be back. For those who may have wanted to get their, uh, physical tomorrow, as well as the 28th, you can do that. Harbor Health, uh, Community Center, our students. Okay, fall sports are, uh, in action. I'm going to conclude, uh, but they're going on right now for people to go ahead and try out and teachers are going back on Monday. Uh, we're going to be going back on a week from today, uh, another school year, uh, and it's been a restful summer as far as I'm concerned, and I'm looking forward to getting, uh, back out there. To conclude, um, this was Media Day, folks, uh, for our, our high school team, uh, the largest high school, competing at the highest levels, uh, and the quarterback club, I want to thank them for doing a tremendous job with Media Day. Our football team, uh, getting ready, coming out of the tunnel is tremendous. Cape Cod Times was in attendance to cover this. Uh, I, I note that because Barnstable High School begins the season ranked first according to the Cape Cod Times, based on how hard our athletes have been working over the summer. Uh, this is the seven-on-seven Cape and Islands championship, which we won going into the season. Uh, these are our seniors, uh, who we're looking to be leaders both on the field and in the classroom to set the tone in a positive way, as has been the case Barnstable High School for many, many years. And, uh, the team picture, uh, for, for the, the high school. This was Media Day. Again, not every high school does this. Not every high school is able to get the word out, to platform their players, to help them to make that connection, uh, moving on to college, continue their athletic careers. We're certainly doing that in Barnstable with good success. Um, folks, I want to bring this up. This was a flag football tournament. These are the Lady War Dogs, uh, and they, of course, won the championship. This was last weekend, right at Barnstable High School, and they did a tremendous job, uh, going on to, to win the championship. Um, so beyond that, these are students in Barnstable, a couple of the other students. But I wanted to bring this up because just in talking with the parents, uh, about some of these outstanding students to see if they would possibly, uh, think about considering Barnstable in the world of school choice that we're living in, uh, that was some of the feedback that I got. Barnstable High School is the only club, girls' flag football team on the Cape and Islands, and the parents were speaking to it about how that's a draw for them and they want to participate in what we have going on in this district. Flag football started off with eight teams in 2023. There were over 51 schools. It's not yet an MIAA sport. We haven't reached that threshold, but the sport is growing. And I say again, Barnstable High School is the only, and we hope this number grows. Our athletic director does an outstanding job working with the other athletic directors in the region. We hope it grows, but as of right now, we are the only girls' flag football team, uh, and our athletes are doing tremendous. To conclude, uh, our boys soccer team, well-coached, bunched, hard-working group, they begin the year ranked first in the Cape and Islands, uh, according to the Cape Cod Times for boys' soccer. Um, haven't always had this ranking, but we, we were looking for a great season, uh, for this team as well as, uh, many of our other teams, uh, going into the new school year. Thank you.
Kathy, may I add one thing that I think Andre missed and, and, and maybe Andre wants to speak to it because it is the people of action that are doing the event at HYCC, the giveaway, the backpack giveaway? Shall I mention it? Um, okay, so it's a back-to-school event. They've been collecting, um, backpacks, supplies, and all sorts of stuff at Staples. It's been just in, I've been by several times just to kind of say hi and buy other stuff I needed and donate a little bit, but it's August 25th from 12 to 8:00 PM at the Hyannis Youth and Community Center. Um, it's a first-come, first-served basis while supplies last, but people were extremely generous this year. I mean, every time I went there, the table was just jammed and i- if you ever want to feel good about your community, just follow those guys around. They're like amazing. And so that, that giveaway is something that I think really buoys our, our, um, our students and, and keeps the faith in the community. So I just wanted to mention that and Andre's a member of that too. Thank you.
Item 2.4 Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I've got a few items for the committee and community this evening. Want to talk a little bit about the preparation work that's been done, uh, all summer, but in particular, uh, in the past couple of weeks, uh, to open up for school next year as, or this year, it's, it's around the corner. Next week, uh, Monday, as Andre noted, we welcome staff back, uh, with a convocation and department and building-based meetings. They have time to work in their classrooms and workspaces on the 26th, and then students in grades one and up, uh, join us on Wednesday, the 27th. Um, we are looking forward to welcoming our students and staff back. Uh, transportation has been busy setting bus routes and, um, developing bus passes. Uh, pickup this week, uh, we had ours today, 7 to 4:45, tomorrow, 7 to 4:45, and on Friday, 7 to 2:45, uh, at the Barnstable Intermediate School. Uh, the buses will begin on Wednesday, as I noted, and I'd like to, um, remind everyone to allow for extra time and patience and safety. Um, it, uh, will be busy on Wednesday, uh, and to never pass a bus picking up or dropping off students. We do occasionally hear concerns, uh, so we appreciate everyone's cooperation in keeping everybody safe. Building principals have been busy getting their, uh, teams ready and their buildings ready, sending out messages to families and staff in advance. Schedules are set, um, school and district handbooks are being updated as are mandated trainings for our staff when they return on Monday. Uh, the FCEC, Family and Community Engagement Center, has been busy all summer as they typically are. Uh, for the months of June through August, we have completed 212 registrations and 38 are currently in process. Um, so it is a steady stream, not, uh, not super busy right now, but a steady stream, uh, of enrollments, um, through the summer. And that does not count anybody who pre-registered, uh, in the spring of last year, though. We encourage families to update their emergency contact information through our student management system. Um, it is really, uh, important to do so in terms of, um, allowing us to provide you with proper notifications such as absenteeism, uh, our newsletters from our, uh, administration and teachers, and then especially emergency notifications that go out through email, text, and phone. Um, when you are given an opportunity to opt out, we do not suggest that. Once you opt out, uh, you opt out for everything going forward, and so you may miss emergency notifications. So the beginning of the year is a great time for those updates. Um, the facilities department has been very, very busy this summer. Um, we have been short-staffed and I want to really note that a number of people have pitched in, uh, going an extra mile, uh, in order to cover various buildings. Uh, we've had custodians working overtime and our, um, courier, who also serves as our floater, has been assigned, uh, at numerous times, uh, to help with, uh, cleaning and, uh, the waxing of floors and moving of furniture. Um, and it was a shorter summer than usual. Um, we typically have more like 10 weeks and we are starting as soon as possible. Um, August 25th is really the, the, um, early, the late, the earliest possible start that we could have. Uh, so it's been really, really busy. Um, schools are actively being worked on, finishing up, being cleaned, and floors being waxed. Um, and EnviroMed is in this week, conducting clearance testing from the testing that they had done in the spring and conducting, if needed, new evaluations of spaces and anything that arises, um, that, uh, needs to be cleaned will be cleaned. Uh, and they are very actively working with our team this week. Uh, we have carpet installation at the United Elementary School Library and adjacent offices as well as the Barnstable Intermediate School. We expect it to be done this week and then the furniture will be moved back. Um, we are conducting fire department inspections and building inspections to obtain the appropriate certificates. Um, at the, um, in the parking areas, we have work being done at BWB, uh, in painting lines, and also parking spaces around the district are being repainted for those who are, um, mobility impaired, and we are updating some signage. The prep work is occurring to demolish, uh, two portables. And a further update on the capital projects is typically presented at the September meeting, um, so I anticipate having more information on other projects, um, at that time, including which ones are out to bid. I'd like to elaborate a little bit on the summer leadership retreat. Um, we had an excellent three days with the Barnstable District Leadership Team, which includes our central office leadership, building principals and assistant principals, curriculum directors, uh, special education coordinators, and some of our other directors throughout the district. Um, day one was heavily focused on instruction. Um, we took a deep dive into multiple, uh, data, um, data sets that we have to really take a deep examination at stu- uh, of student learning, uh, perceptions of academic challenge, uh, and, uh, various observations, uh, that either we've made or, um, various visitors have made, uh, during things like the DESI District Review. Um, it, we had tremendous feedback from those who are participating, uh, and they were able to dive deeply and, uh, really carefully consider action steps, uh, in order to focus on instruction, uh, in the coming years. Um, we used this as a launch point for our building-based team to develop goals for 25, 26, uh, to focus on instruction and improve student learning outcomes. Um, Mo Lovett, uh, our, uh, database, um, and directory administr- she's got a million, a million, uh, words in her title, but, um, she does all things data, um, did tremendous work in putting it together. On day two, um, we had Michael Joyce, our Student Services Attorney, come to, uh, Barnstable in the morning and provide a legal update and legal refresher for our team on, um, student privacy and confidentiality as related to student records. There's always a ton of questions and it's one of the things that, um, we take very, very seriously. Um, he also previewed changes that are coming in 26, 27 around seclusion or timeouts that are part of, um, the Department of Education's restraint regulations. Um, so we're starting to plan now for that implementation going forward. Um, there was a pretty large, uh, Supreme Court case called the Mahmood Decision related to curriculum, um, opt-out accommodations. Um, so he shared a legal update there and we're incorporating some language into our district handbook as a result. And then, uh, he also touched upon artificial intelligence. Um, his focus was particularly around students and protecting student information and privacy, um, that would also pertain to any personnel information, um, but we were able to touch upon both the opportunities and then also risks that come with AI. In the afternoon, building teams continued, uh, their planning around goals as well as strategizing for strong starts to the beginning of the school year. On the third day, a, a smaller group of the Barnstable District Leadership Team, we had our curriculum coordinators, um, we did not have them attend this. Um, we spent the third day, um, as Andre had noted, strengthening our safety practices. Um, Mary Beth Taylor's leadership, um, under her leadership, put together a presentation from the I Love You Guys Foundation, which is, um, a very, very strong, um, very strong group that is getting more, um, attention and traction in Massachusetts and also the region. Um, and because of that, I opened up, um, the session to, uh, Dennis Yarm- uh, the regional, the regions districts, and so we did also have some attendees from Dennis Yarmouth as well as, um, Cape Cod Tech, attending with our leadership. Uh, we also had members of town departments attending, including Megan Savage, the, uh, town's safety officer, uh, members of the various fire departments here in Barnstable and the Barnstable Police Department. And, um, I think one of the strength of the I Love You Guys Standards Response Protocol is that it takes our Alice work that we have invested in very deeply, um, and then adds to it. And, um, will, my suggestion is, um, not at this meeting, but at a future meeting, um, have more of a formal presentation because there are a ton of materials that, um, they put out. This is actually a parent guide for what to expect. And, um, the, the benefit of it is, um, just coming together with common language. A lot of times, if, uh, something is happening in the community, it affects multiple schools and to make sure that all of the schools are using the same language, uh, sometimes a school might say shelter in place where another one would say modified lockdown. Um, this really unifies everybody around a common language, um, and a common response. Um, the other thing that it, uh, clarifies is, um, it adds to our comprehensive response manual, which is based upon the, you know, certain threats that may be presented like hazmat or a tornado. Um, this breaks it down more around what your action would be versus what the threat is. And so it's a little simpler, uh, because our, our flip chart of various things that we could be responding to is quite, quite large. So it doesn't replace it, but it complements it and simplifies it. Um, so that was very, very well received by those in attendance, and we have a lot of support from our, um, community, um, policing division, uh, for moving in this direction. Again, uh, complimenting Alice, uh, that we, that we, um, have been using for, for quite some time. In the afternoon, um, the presentation was more around reunification. Reunification is something we do every day, uh, when we have students depart, uh, normally during dismissal, uh, but occasionally we need to, um, execute a different type of reunification, for example, an early release if there's inclement weather. Um, but what we spent a lot of time talking about, um, and learning about is their method around reunification if we had to do it off-site. And, um, they have a very, um, very clear, uh, very comprehensive approach instead of procedures. And, um, then you saw on the picture, uh, walk, we walked through it and did kind of a, a mock experiment, uh, and people walked through an example. Um, so from here, we'll be rolling this out throughout the district, starting with our faculty and staff, uh, but also students and families, um, in particular, the response protocols. And my suggestion is that we return, uh, and do a, a more formal presentation to the committee as well, uh, so that you learn, uh, more about it. Um, Sandwich has already adopted it and, as I noted, um, DY, uh, and Cape Tech were in attendance, and I know that, um, there's some interest, uh, among other, other communities as well. And then, uh, lastly, I will mention, um, a training that Kathy, Jason Canetta, and I attended today. Um, so we have, uh, a new, um, public relations firm that we're working with and who's helping us with our communications. They held a three-hour, um, crisis communication workshop for us. We went to the, um, B2B TV studio, so I want to thank, uh, Noreen, Brianna, and Travis for their assistance because we actually went through, uh, about an hour of content related to do's and don'ts, uh, about crisis communication and working with the media. And then, um, they, uh, gave us each a scenario, um, on the spot to respond to, uh, and filmed our response at that, um, at, in the, in the TV studio. We played it back and then got feedback from them and kind of critiqued each other as well. It was very, very helpful. Um, I think my big takeaway is how important it is to be all on the same page so that we're we're communicating with our respective audiences with the same message and it's one of clarity. Pierce Cote is the name of the public relations firm. They're out of Osterville, although their parent company is Regan Communications in Boston. And representatives from that firm will be coming to the September 3rd school committee meeting. And that's what I have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Jen?
Just a comment. It's awesome that we have a PR firm to help us communicate with the public. I'm really happy about that. I just wanted to say thank you.
Peter?
All set, thank you.
Andre?
Yes, thank you Chair. So Dr. Hearn, you noted that at the September meeting, you'll be doing the capital improvement, reporting on the capital improvement projects in the district. That's, am I correct in understanding that?
We have to have our planning meeting, our agenda planning meeting with the Chair and Vice Chair, but historically, the capital improvement plan update comes at the September meeting.
Okay, thanks. Yes, thank you. I bring that up because I reached out for some information and it's okay that we have that meeting, excuse me, that conversation about projects that are going on in the district. Rit large, I've been receiving some feedback versus relative to the capital improvement projects across the district, and I'm going to speak to one, but certainly in regards to some of our athletic facilities and those projects. So I look forward to learning more about that in September. I did note in your newsletter, in terms of maintaining air quality in our schools, you gave a report talking about what the custodians are doing. There's a link to a previous school committee presentation, a presentation in June. I was, I was able to get this out to some community members. I was specifically wondering though about the air quality and the environment at Barnstable United Elementary School.
Sorry, I didn't, I thought I turned it off. So at Barnstable United Elementary School, we have EnviroMed coming back on Friday. So we'll have a little bit more information about the clearance testing at that school in particular. The website is now up. I did share that with faculty and staff with my back-to-school letter that went out a couple of days ago. And I will have a communication out to families similarly with a back-to-school letter with the link to the website.
Thank you. That was the feedback that I had received, just community members wanting to make sure. And I thought it was a wonderful addition to the newsletter. I sent that out to them and that seemed to give them the information that they needed. Staying at Barnstable United Elementary School, now relative to the culture and climate in that building, Sarah, what does SOAR mean? What does SOAR mean?
So I don't have the acronym memorized. I know that it is part of their PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. So each one represents a certain expected behavior or value at Barnstable. I, I don't have it at the tip of my tongue.
Okay, because in case you don't have kids at BUES, when you walk in the building, there is this acronym SOAR, which is tied to our mascot, the Red Hawks, SOAR. And so it's an acronym that has certain, means certain things. And then there's a number of things right when you walk into BUES about being a Red Hawk. And, you know, this is our mascot and we are thrilled and excited about it. This is something that's new. It's, hasn't been like this. It came about in the last year or two. I'm not familiar with this going beyond that, this new, because again, I've been in the district for some years. So my question relative to that, so when you're, again, walking into BUES, if you're a new, if you're new to the district, why I'm, I want to, I need some clarification here. You know, you'd walk in and think that, you know, we always were trying to push down our mascot, you know, to the elementary schools and it's always looked like this. It hasn't. In fact, as I note, it's taken place in the last year or two. And we have a, you know, SOAR, I wanted, you know, in SOAR because we're not the Red Raiders anymore, we're the Red Hawks. And so the SOAR is supposed to, you know, and I'm interested to know what, what it actually means because it's right there in, in, but Dr. Hearn, if, over the last two years, there's been much work done at the United School relative to informing the students about the Red Hawks. What work and what instruction or information is taking place at Barnstable United School to inform the fourth and fifth graders about the rich athletic history in Barnstable before we were the Red Hawks? How are, how are the students? Because right now, they're learning a lot about the Red Hawks and SOAR and all of, all these other things. This is what they know. What I want to know and understand, if this is something that we're pushing down and for them to understand, what information do our fourth and fifth graders have relative to the rich history of the Red Raiders?
So getting back to SOAR, I don't remember what each of the letters stands for, but it's an expected behavior or a core value.
Can I just jump in? I would ask you what the SOAR mean because we had a, we had during one of our educational, what do we call it at the beginning of our school committee meetings?
Highlight in education?
Highlights in education. They came and talked about it. So do you remember what it was?
I, I don't. That's why I asked it.
But, so.
I'm asking this, again.
Right, but I'm just simply asking a question is, do any of us know what it is? Because we had a presentation done to us by the folks at the 45 Building. And I'll be honest with you, I don't remember what it was. But, so I wouldn't expect a superintendent to remember what it is either, to be honest with you. So SOARS wasn't about the Red Hawks. During their presentation, they never talked about the Red Hawks. It wasn't about sports. I know there's other things in the world other than sports in education and it wasn't about sports. SOARS, when they came into the presentation, was, I forget what it was, but it was about positive reinforcement for behavior. And, all right, because I remember we had to look at the screen and decide which bucket we were in. Remember how we all had to look at the screen and we had to decide what bucket we were in? They never mentioned the Red Hawks or, or the, what was our old mascot's name? I don't remember.
The Red Raiders.
It wasn't a Red Raider, so I don't remember that. I came from.
The Red Raiders, yes.
Okay. So that, they never mentioned during their presentation, anything about the Red Hawks or the, or the Red Raiders. It was all about education and not about sports. So that would be my input on.
Thank you, Mike.
I can, I can answer your question.
Yeah, thanks.
SOAR is safety, ownership, achievement and respect.
Has nothing to do with.
Thank, thank, thank you Chair. And again, we're talking about BUES when you walk in the building, there's, and this is new, a lot of Red Hawk, you know, imagery and information. And some would say this is part of a greater strategy to push down the Red Hawks. It's certainly new. We don't know, it, it's certainly new. And so again, Dr. Hearn, my question is, if there's this new information relative to our current mascot, so that as soon as you walk in, you are flooded with information about the Red Hawks, our fourth and fifth graders are flooded, and that's fine. It's the mascot, so they should know who the mascot is. My question is, at the same time, what steps are taking place to educate our fourth and fifth graders and in general, we'll start with the fourth and fifth graders though, about the rich history of the Red Raiders?
So I guess what I'll say is that as the BUES has Red Hawks in the lobby and, and being shared with the fourth and fifth graders, they were the Turtles previously. And so the Red Hawk has replaced the Turtles. Our other elementary schools have other mascots. We've got the Bees, we've got the Lobsters, we've got the Starfish. BUES at one point had been Turtles and is now the Red Hawks in an effort to unite the district with the idea that students are here in the district and continuing with us and see themselves as Barnstable students through their education. School choice is, you know, something that we confront and we want to be the best and we want to retain and attract students. And so having students in Barnstable and seeing themselves as Barnstable students is kind of a byproduct of all of this, but they had at one point been the Turtles.
That is news to me, so I thank you for sharing that as somebody that again, cares about these things within the context of the overall education community. It's certainly, there's certainly more to school than sports and I know that because I'm a teacher. But, you know, what your name is, that identity, the pride, the history, the tradition, the years, that, that's certainly very meaningful to many community members, alumni and otherwise. But again, it, it was, so you've given me some information for the next meeting, which is coming up, you know, so that we will follow up on this. I didn't know about the Turtles. I didn't know about all these different mascots. I thought that we just were the Red Raiders for many years and then, you know, you came, I didn't know that each school had, so I will, I will educate myself. I'm glad I asked this question. But my, the, really the foundation of it is, you know, if, if any push to highlight the Red Hawks and to talk about it, which I'm all for, and to get the kids excited, they should be excited. At the same time, they need to know and understand who the Red Raiders were, what they meant, certain things like the Raymond E. Hostetter Award, given to an outstanding Red Raider football player, the Raiders Club Award, given to another football player, the Gene J. Hinckley Memorial Award. And there's so much there that the students need to know and understand. And I don't see any reason why that's not taking place currently. We certainly have a, I mean, we have a school committee member that is telling you all these things myself. So thank you for informing me and I will be kind of looking at that going forward in terms of how that's moving forward.
Mike?
So just to kind of elaborate on that, it sounds like maybe you were only in the high school. So all four of my kids went through the Barnstable High School. Three of them were Red Raiders. Actually, maybe all four were Red Raiders actually. So I think Hallie might've been there before it changed. I think she was there when it changed. So all four of them started in preschool in every school. The only place that was the Red Raiders in Barnstable for the last, since 2000 and, well, we graduated in 2019, so 12 years earlier, or 2005, the only school that was the Red Ra-, the Red Raiders was the high school. They all had, I remember the, what was it, now West Villages had a blue big thing. I forget what its name was, but every school had other, other things other than, the Red Raiders was only the high school.
I like the Turtles.
Yeah, I do too.
It's an awesome name for sports teams.
Well, because then they had a big turtle. Did your kids go there when that was happening?
No, but I would, I would.
Mascot, that was a turtle.
Definitely be a turtle if I could be.
So, so, so just to let you know, there, that was the only place. And I had three kids that were Red Raiders and not every, not, and I'm, I know I've talked to plenty of folks in the community and there are some that would like the Red Raider back. And there are some, including, I have three kids that are alumni, four kids that are alumni, I was not, who aren't necessarily as passionate. So it's everybody's opinion. And as far as just for Sarah, just so you know, the pushdown that you're talking about for doing the Red Hawk going down, that was a school committee decision. That was the set, you weren't on. Kathy and I were on at the time. That was a school, and that was a school committee decision. Whether I agree with it or not, it doesn't, it's irrelevant. It was, it was decided on by that present school committee to have the Red Hawk, once we got the name, to kind of have it go down through the schools, into the schools. That was a, that was a school committee decision, not a superintendent because Sarah wasn't even here at the time. It was way before her, before her. My question for you was, oh, no, just a comment about that, that new, the unification after, that is so important. And I know I'm not saying anything to you, but having been a firefighter in this town and a paramedic in this town, and I was actually involved in an incident in Centerville where the school was canceled and at like 10 o'clock in the morning, we went as the fire department and said, kids can't go back in. And I remember, because I was the one kind of placed in the liaison position between the schools and the fire department. So I personally was involved in that and that was, there were some other issues, but that was one of the biggest problems is the unification. Where are we going to put them? There were, we finally made the determination that we weren't going to have them go back into schools, the fire department, and we were having buses come. It was really, really cold out, so we wanted to get that going quick. But then became the thing of, well, where are we sending them and how are we going to get parents? Because it went through the town like wildfire that we had emptied out Centerville and they weren't going to be there anymore. So like that, to me, having been on the other side, is one of the biggest issues. And the other thing was also having somewhere for parents to go at the school because we started getting flooded with parents coming to Centerville Elementary, which is a small little road. And so it, it really became a huge problem. And I remember talking to the principal at the time and he was like, any suggestions? Like, we work together to do it, but definitely that needs to be smooth because at that point, everybody's in crisis mode. Parents are freaking out, like, it's just, kids are freaking out, staff kind of doesn't know. It's just, that like, to me, is the biggest point of that whole, that whole thing is just the reunification. But thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and, and I had a child in Centerville when that incident occurred and I can remember when they were, I forget the name of the church.
They went to the church.
They went to the church that was right near the 1856 store. And the one thing that happened and, and, you know, I know that it was stressful and felt challenging at the time, but as a parent who had no idea of that, the community perception of the parents is that we were notified, we were able to get to them and it, from, from our point of view, it worked out. Although I do remember hearing that they were meeting to debrief and improve down the road, which stresses how important it was in today's training that there is that single voice and that.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody knows who the point people are so that the families know who to go to and they're not getting mixed messages.
And that was one of the things between, it was Matt Schifely was the principal at the time and it was between me and Matt and like, I was talking to the fire department and he was talking to the superintendent, because I think the superintendent wasn't in town or something. And he, him and I decided, because I knew him, so I, we made a decision that he was going to be the voice, because you have to have one voice for parents and like, because the parents were calling the fire department and it was just like, it was a nightmare. And the incident was actually really simple, but once you start deciding that you're not letting the kids go, I mean, they talk about how they have a fire alarm at the school and everybody goes back in. Well, this wasn't, the fire alarms were pulled and nobody ever went back in. So then people started freaking out about why? Well, it's just, like I said, that to me was like, having been involved in that, I'm glad it's actually went kind of smooth on the outside because there was a whole lot of questions going on. And I remember even being like, well, where are we going to send them? And the school was like, well, we're not really sure. Like, and that's the type of stuff that like, that was their side, but then I had my own problems on my side too. So it was just that unification and that part of the, of the, has to really be wired tight. That would be my suggestion on stuff like that.
All right. Thank you. Item 2.5 Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Okay, so I have a few slides today myself. We are just today wrapping up our third day of new educator orientation. So I had the privilege of working with our new educators Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. So what you can see on the screen here is every new educator received a binder of materials. It's also in a Google Classroom so that they can access it anywhere electronically and a little bit of Barnstable swag. So we had 29 new educators join us. It was three days. We had 11 key presentation topics and those ranged from, like our directors and departments to some of our smaller departments, health services. HR and payroll came by. We had special education, mentor and induction, a presentation on licensure. We also had a full day of technology and within that, all of the educators received their devices and had a kind of round robin of presentations on Aspen, educator evaluation and our Ed eval platform and our instructional technology platforms. We also had our many, depending on our, our new hires, the representatives of each department, our department leads, join us this morning and did small breakout groups with their curriculum leads. And that was super well received. This is the second year in a row that we've added that as a topic, the highest rated topic in the feedback. We had two special events, one of which we do every year, but it's still special. School-based orientation is how we ended the day, so all. the day. So all of our groups departed at, just after lunch at 12:30, and went to their individual schools for a school-based orientation. And the other special event was an optional bus tour of Barnstable. I will share a little bit more about that. We had two meet and greet lunches. So the principals joined us one day for lunch, and today, our educators, their respective mentors, joined them today for lunch. And the mentors actually knew this year, we had them join their new educators at the school-based orientation. And of course, it was definitely one amazing group of new educators. One of the primary goals of the orientation is really to make sure that our new educators feel that they have, they know the district, that they have some go-to people, that they have some high-level overview information about the district, so that they can feel supported and hopefully confident as they start on Monday. One of the key pieces, though, you know, that's really the short term, but one of the key pieces is related to mentor support. So one of the questions that I always ask staff, the new educators through a survey, is, you know, what level of licensure do you have? I ask them also about years of experience and what mentored experience they have. So this was the breakdown this year, which is very different from what we've had historically. The colors melded a little bit. So just to clarify, are the lower left hand, the 43%, that is initial licenses. The upper right, the blue, actually matches with professional licenses. So we have 36% of our new hires have, hold a professional license. The green is for provisional, provisional. And then we had a small number, bless you, of educators who hold a temporary license. And what I point out, and why this is so different from usual, is there is not a single emergency license this year. We're getting close, I mean, it would be expected, but there may still be some. And so it was nice to see, you know, it definitely guides how we're matching up our mentors and new teachers. So it was just really interesting, so I wanted to share that. I also asked them as part of the survey, is how are you feeling, like, before? And so this is how they were feeling at the morning of day one. A lot of excitement, a little bit of anxiety, a little nervous, a little eagerness. And so then they spend the day with technology, and then we start to get ready for the next day. And this is day two. Still excited, but we see overwhelmed. Yep. I like to see that they're inspired, but tired, and hopeful. So, you know, I think that definitely, which I did foreshadow, yes, that was a great one. So the word cloud that I selected, for some reason, it like actually clusters the phrase that you put in. Usually it breaks the words apart. But one person had unable to follow directions, because I had them using three different index cards, and they used the wrong color. Fine. But they said clearly unable to follow directions. They were really just such a great group, and just so engaged in all of the presentations. What I also always share with you is, at the end, I ask them for their six-word story. And so the instructions for them is, you know, at the end of the day, how are you feeling? Like, give me a snippet of, like, what you're thinking about for the start of the school year, where you're at, in six words. And so I'll give you a minute to read this. But this is the set that they shared. And I swear, they get these in less than a minute. I don't know how they, they come up with them, but they do. A couple of them, it looks like, did hit a return. Most of them are all on the same line. I see a couple. There is one that got cut off, I'm seeing. It was new changes bring new exciting opportunities. So again, you know, they, it just, I think it gives you a sense of where they're at. I think they're excited, and just really a fantastic group. So as I mentioned, we did have a bus tour. It is optional. So this was my group that joined me. I will just have to give a shout out to Five Star. They donated the bus for this event. This is actually the second year that they've done that. We take the group on a tour through, all through Barnstable. We drive by all of the schools. We drive through the attendance areas for the various schools. I might point out a restaurant or two. But really, just such a great group, and lots of conversations, and really, you know, kind of like, I think, like, a lot of new information. It was, last year, the group, I had a couple of people that grew up in Barnstable and still wanted to go, great. But I think for the whole, for the most part, I think everyone was really new to Barnstable. So it really gave them a sense of the size, all of the different schools, and, you know, our community. Couple action photos here. We have the technology distribution on the left, and so everyone is trying to get into their Chromebooks. And then on the right, that's Kim Staloski introducing a special ed activity that she was going to have them do. And then, oh, no. That's my photo of the entire group. Wait. No. I don't know what happened. I'll pass my picture around instead. But it was, we had a beautiful morning, and the whole group, you know, they came out, they got their individual pictures taken, and then the group photo, which unfortunately, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to pass around. That's what the slides should look like.
Jen, questions, comments? Peter?
Just a comment. Thanks, Chris. And as you know, I was part of the mentor program for many years. And I always found it invaluable. Hopefully, the teachers I worked with also did. And I know it's a costly, it can be costly, you know, there's a stipend for the teachers and stuff. But I always thought this, this was absolutely money well spent, because it's just so difficult coming into, being a new teacher. I remember, you know, 1,000 years ago, my first year teaching, I worked with another teacher, experienced teacher in a fifth grade classroom, and we were like a pod or a team or something. And her second day, she went out on medical leave, so they brought in a sub. So it was me and the sub, and the sub was new. And so they looked to me, the, the sub looked to me for all the years. I had no idea what, somehow I got through the year. But, you know, I always think back to that, and, you know, how helpful it is to have somebody in the building that you can go to. And I think it's a fabulous program, and you do a great job running it.
Audrey?
Yeah, just to add on to that, you know, somebody that's worked in education, these times are invaluable, you know, over the course of the year, to make those connections. And then to kind of, you know, the, it's, it's an amazing camaraderie that exists between educators. And I noted, I just want to talk about some of these comments. One said overwhelmed, but excited, and another one was healthy living. So again, great job. The connection between overwhelmed, but excited, to what you're doing, is that having that mentor or that other educator to go to in those moments of overwhelm, which are going to take place, possibly some next week, most undoubtedly, it will happen in September, and then throughout the course of the year, that creates an environment where then you can go back into the classroom, recharge, you're unburdened from whatever was bothering you, and you can go ahead and do your job. So it stops not only teachers from becoming burnt out, but it prevents teachers from possibly going overboard, going over the edge, in some of our situations. You noted, you know, you're do, you had presentations and seminars related to classroom management. Certainly going to be challenging for some of our, our first-year teachers. So again, to echo my, my colleagues, great job. 29 new educators in the district. I'm, might have been, 20, maybe more, 29, 36, either, either or, you know, high, high numbers. I think it's wonderful that you take them around to each school to learn the district, because we certainly push for and want some of our new educators to be homegrown. So they might be familiar with Barnstable, but they might not be familiar with Barnstable. So that's a great opportunity for them to see the district writ large. And I'll just conclude, because, you know, you had the, you had the event in the Astro Park for the conclusion of this program, for the educators and the mentors on a previous slide deck. I saw that, you know, and, you know, so now this is the beginning of a new year. It does, it does make a difference. This is not pro forma. It's good for the veteran educators, mid-year, to kind of, right, why did you get into teaching in the first place? Are you on kind of a road to nowhere? You know, it's kind of drab, you're not excited to go back next, next week, and it's just going to be, no. Why did you get, so it, it goes, and then certainly for the, the new educators to talk to somebody with the experience. It's tremendous. So good job.
Mike?
So I just have a couple of questions, just because I'm not an educator. I was a firefighter. So as one of, me and Jen are the only two that weren't educators. So my question is, the, the people that you were hiring, hiring, the pie chart, they were the, the no emergencies. So there was one that was, what's the yellow one, transitional?
Temporary.
Temporary. So what's the difference between that? Initial is your first five years, right?
Well, it's actually provisional is your first five years.
Okay.
And then initial, and the difference really between those, there are some differences. But one in particular is the SEI endorsement.
Oh, okay.
For, for the licenses that require the SEI endorsement. But the temporary license is for educators who are coming from out of state.
Oh, okay.
So we had a few educators that were coming from out of state, and so they are
Yeah, they have to go through the state process.
They have the one-year license of the temporary license. So they are licensed.
And but during that year, they have to do like their MTELS and all of that stuff. Oh, okay. Because I was one, I was like, what's a transit, like, a temporary, like, what's that mean? Okay. Because it wasn't an emergency, because emergency was kind of like the temporary, well, working towards it, or whatever you want to do. But, okay. So that's for people out of state.
And, and they are licensed, they're coming in licensed.
They were already a licensed teacher in another state, but they have to jump through the Massachusetts hoops. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do they, do they still have any reciprocity between states? When I came back in, I, I came a while ago, but I came from New York, then Pennsylvania, then Massachusetts. And one of those had reciprocity and the other didn't. So I was just curious.
They do, but still, the, the MTEL is really the, the tipping point. There are a few assessments that are offered in other states that now Desi recognizes, but it's just, it doesn't seem to be as easy. I think the temporary is kind of their path for that.
Yeah, one other question, sorry. So we don't have any new educators in emergency license. Does the state still recognize that? Or are they getting, phasing that out? Because I know that was supposed to be a temporary thing for COVID, and it was supposed to be phased, I mean, at this point, we're how many years out of COVID? Like, I assume that they should be getting rid of that, I assume.
Yeah, I think they, this is the last year for renewals of the emergency license. Like, no one can come in and say, oh, I want to apply and get an emergency license.
So they're letting those people, like, have another year to get?
Yeah. They've set a kind of a end date of, of those.
Okay. So they finally set an end date?
Yep.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
I, I had two, two other items, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
Nope, that's all right. Because I, I don't want to offend my new administrators, that I, I don't have any pictures or slides, but they probably, the pictures probably wouldn't have come out. So on August 11th, we did hold our new administrator orientation. There were six participants. And so we were really excited to welcome them to our leadership team. It was a great introduction, because that was the day before our summer leadership institute. So I think it gave them a nice, you know, a soft entry into the work that we were doing. But also because our summer leadership was, was predominantly focused on instruction and curriculum, along with other topics. But that was really how we kicked it off. Our topics for the new administrator orientation were, you know, more personnel, finance, hiring procedures, navigating BTA contracts, educator evaluation, and bullying civil rights in Title IX. So still great, great group. Again, really engaged, but I did, did not want them to feel like their orientation was any less. And then the last thing, and I'll go through this one quickly, but I did want to give you an update regarding the PRISM grant. So back in May, the district, we submitted an application for the PRISM grant, which is Partnership for Reading Success in Massachusetts. We applied for PRISM III, Track II. So this is for districts who are ready to evaluate, select, and purchase curriculum materials in school year 2020, 25, 26. And so while we, while this, through the budget process, we delayed the curriculum review for secondary ELA, this grant provided us with an opportunity to move forward with the curriculum review under this grant. So we were notified at the end of July that we'd been awarded the grant. It's a four-year grant, and I use air quotes, because the first year is really three months. So we're in that first year of the grant. And the grant's going to support the district to establish and launch a PRISM Curriculum Council. And then, starting in the fall, we'll evaluate, select pilot, and then get to a purchase of high-quality instructional materials for secondary ELA. And then year three, 26, 27, we'll launch and implement the adopted curricular materials. And then in year four, which would be 27, 28, will be support to monitor and sustain implementation of the instructional materials. The funding from the grant will be used to support coaching and consultation from a Department of Education assigned consultant. And I could not be more thrilled to, that we are going to be working with TNTP again, and specifically Ari Kovacs, who was our consultant for the GLEAM grant. So excited, because her familiarity with the district is, it's just going to benefit and kind of accelerate our work. And, you know, she's so well-received by all of our elementary staff. The funding will support stipends for the PRISM Curriculum Council. It will support the purchase of high-quality instructional materials, professional development for educators, and then ongoing virtual and onsite support from the consultants beyond that first year of implementation. And so while this might sound similar to the GLEAM grant, because it really is, the, the addition is that fourth year. So we're actually going to have an additional year that really supports sustainability of the efforts beyond the grant, grant funding period. Our experience with the GLEAM grant, and our experience with TNTP was just so incredibly positive. The results from our K5 adoption, again, so positive, that I am just really excited that we're able to do this through the PRISM grant. And I'm just really happy that the state funding is allowing us to have this opportunity that might otherwise have been delayed. So, thank you.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? Nope.
All set, thanks.
Andre, Mike. All right. Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Old business. Item 3.1, create policy J I J C dash A cell phones and personal electronic devices. The Subcommittee met on August 11th, discussed feedback received, and determined that the policies as presented during the July meeting needed no changes. The, there weren't very many, there was not as much feedback, very little, actually, between the first ask and this ask. The majority of the concern centered around how communication would occur between families and students. And before we get to open discussion, I just want to say that the policy is written with broad language, so that it provides flexibility for the individual buildings, BUES, BIS, BHS, and then the elementary level, to address the specifics in their handbooks. Because each of those levels has different needs, and, you know, you deal with students differently at different levels. So that's why some of the concerns about the specifics will be included in handbooks, and will be relevant and appropriate for that level. So if there's a motion, we can open discussion.
Sorry. Sorry. Move to create policy J I C J dash A cell phones and personal electronic devices as presented in tonight's materials.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. So discussion.
Yes, thank you. So I wrote a letter. I was one that wrote a letter.
So I wrote a letter, I was one that wrote a letter to the subcommittee, because I have grave concerns about any sort of restrictive policy regarding cell phones. And I'd like to read that letter, it'll take one minute if that, maybe two, so that the public knows where I stand on the issue, because I feel like it's a multi-layered, multifaceted problem that banning doesn't address, seeing that we're never, ever going to get rid of the hellscape that is social media, or how readily we are attached to our phones and how addicted we all are to them. I mean, I think probably most of the parents I know miss their kid's first soccer goal because they were death scrolling. So I just wanted to read this. "I'm sorry I missed the meeting last time. I had a, I have a strange job and it just got really hectic. But I did want to weigh in because I didn't get an opportunity. I have some thoughts to offer on the phone policy discussion. I'd like to first say that I recognize there's a problem with the attention span and electronics in the classroom. I agree that it needs to be addressed, but I feel the idea of a district-wide ban on cell phones is completely faulty. Here are the reasons. Number one, have any Barnstable students been asked what they think about the yonder pouches? We should not be postulating on what they need without asking them, and we should really include them in any policies that, that relate to them, especially in the higher grades. I also reached out to people of action, they were not consulted, didn't know. I asked them to weigh in. I feel like there's a lot more information, I'm talking about the high school level now, that needs to be garnered and a lot more opinions that need to be included before any policy is made. I have very, maybe I won't read, I'll just speak. I have a ton of concerns about ESL families and their children being the only speakers of English at school, and the plumber shows up and nobody can reach them. That really concerns me. But the number one thing is that five years ago, there was a tornado that ripped through town. And my son was at BIS in camp, and when the sky turned green and then black, and I called him, the relief of hearing his voice and knowing he was safe was absolutely monumental. And I would never, ever, ever restrict that. Because if the unspeakable happens, and quite frankly, I've been very concerned about security at the high school, and I've mentioned it with Sarah, we've had tons of conversations about this. You know, I go by once a week because my kid can't remember anything, and somebody holds the door open for me and I walk right in. If the unspeakable happens and I cannot reach my kid, I don't know what to say about that. And actually, one of the people of action mentioned, it'd be interesting to hear what happens at schools when that has happened. What's their regulation on cell phones now? So that, that, that is the absolute deal breaker for me. Some students, like mine, will be 18 this year, so he can go die for the country, but he can't be trusted with a cellphone during school. I just think we should have a better angle at preparing our kids for what's appropriate and what's not versus just banning it. It feels like footloose to me. It just makes absolutely, oh, Kathy, how appropriate. Please, please silence your cellphone, we're, you know, we're thinking here.
It is silence.
It was me, I called her, yeah.
Family bypasses.
Jen just set that up.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Nice one, Jen.
Give me that, I'll give you that 20 bucks later, Peter. So there's been a lot of violence over the past years, I know, because that's how I actually ended up getting involved with Sarah and getting people of action involved in the schools when I was a town counselor. And one of the, one of the things that ginned up a lot of that violence, I'm speaking specifically about an attack that happened at the Cape Cod Mall several years ago, was this constant unending text stream of, yeah, we're going to get them, we're going to get them at this time, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, blah, 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 all that stuff. And then, while I understand that that ratchets anger up and really gins up a lot of, of really bad energy and planning, I can also tell you that every child has a Chromebook and can do that on a Google Doc or an email. So I don't think that that concern is being addressed either. Let's see. And then ultimately, I guess, you know, the last meeting that I attended, I was shocked to see the, the discussion at the last meeting when I was in here, when I reviewed the meeting, because I felt like at the last meeting that I was at, and we discussed it, Principal Canetta clearly stated that he had embraced and addressed issues that teachers had, and that we had seen a marked improvement in those areas. That was what my takeaway was from that conversation. So I, I could never, ever support yonder pouches for our high school students. I can totally see disallowing phones for younger grades. And I can see like allowing phones in sixth, seventh, maybe during recess. And I can see training kids in eighth through 12th grade to be responsible with their phones and technology. But just as police jobs have changed over the years, teaching jobs have changed over the years. And this is part of it now. And kids go home and their parents are on phones, they're on phones, it's part of our lives. So I really feel like disallowing it is, is doing a, a real disservice really to kids and not addressing the overall issue, which is that we're all abusive of it. So I just wanted to weigh in so that people know how I feel about it. And I, I really do believe that the kids need to be asked. We need to get more in touch with the multicultural community about this. We need to have people of action weigh in and, and do a deeper dive, because it feels really like siloed legislation to me, which never really works. So, in my experience. Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, I, I couldn't disagree with Jen more, as she knew I would. Yeah, I, I mean, she said we, we can never get rid of social media. I think we can during the school day if, if we take care of these cell phones in a yonder pouch, for sure. I mean, to, to at least a decent degree. And I'm not sure we need to ask the kids if cell phones need to be restricted, because I think we know what their answer's going to be. I do think cell phones need to be restricted. I'll say it again, the most distracting device ever created. They rewire the brain, creating addicting 24/7 desire to access the phone for either entertainment or connecting with friends. Nothing gets a kid's attention, nothing faster than a ping or a notification. I guess the legislator pushed it off to the end of the school year, but we need a policy. And we need to create a policy that goes no cell phones, bell to bell. This policy that we came up with, I, I think is pretty, pretty moderate, kind of common sense, I, I think Kathy said broad language, it is. And as it's written now, I believe each school can develop in their own handbook the details. But I'm a fan of the yonder pouch. I've seen it in, in action, as you know. I don't know any, any town that has gone back, that has stopped using yonder once they get it. The kids, when they're interviewed, seem to respect it, like it, like the conversations in class. And I don't know, it just, I, I'm kind of thinking, we need to develop a cellphone policy. It's being mandated by the state. And it just kind of ticks me off. I think of so many unfunded mandates by our state and the legislature and, and it almost seems like we've, we're going to create a policy, and we're doing that to the BHS staff, we're, we're unfunding this mandate, because I believe yonder pouches takes care of the problem once and for all. So that's where I stand.
Andre?
Yes, thank you. So let's start off kind of where I'm coming from with this, as a teacher, you know, and concerned. Do I believe that we need a cellphone policy? Yes. As I said in the previous meeting, I'll say it again, to pass a law in the real world means nothing. To enforce the law means everything. And that's where my concerns with this policy come to the forefront. I respect the work that's been done by the policy committee in drafting this, in making the language so that there allows for that adaptability within our, our schools. But that's the real conversation, I think, that we're having right now. Okay? The state is leading this, okay? No cell phones, they haven't made a decision. It's prudent for the district to have a policy. Okay, so that's where we are now. This policy needs to be practical and it needs to be enforceable. So the language, I'm, I'm, I'm reading. This means that subject to the expectations outlined in student handbook, cell phones and other personal electronic devices are not accessible to students during the school day. I need clarification there. What does that mean, personal electronic device? Every student has a Chromebook. So, so we need to, that language does not work for me. Because, again, the world we're living in, one-to-one technology, every student had, they, you know, so, but technically, that could mean that's their, another personal electronic device, their Chromebook, which we give them to do the classwork. Now you're, are you saying, right, that there's the gray area there? Are you saying I can't use my personal Chromebook, which you gave me, to do my schoolwork based on this policy? That needs to be cleaned up. There needs to be some time during the day when students can use their cellphone. The idea, and this is again, what I started with. I respect that this conversation, I respect the zeal, but I'm reminded of prohibition. What you're saying has many valid points. This is an issue, it has certain negative effects, but the implementation of how we go about this is what really means everything, and, and there's work to be done. I have no problem with students having access to their cell phones at lunch. Or during, like, where are those times during the, you know, those informal times during the day when I can take my cellphone out and just peruse and check to see, excuse me, what's going on? Right? It's not practical to imagine a world where there's just, you know, you, 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 you know, we have all the time, and then for seven hours during the day, just like that, where you, oh, oh, no, no cellphone, you know, and then we're going to go back. And if it is practical, then to my colleague's point about this being an unfunded mandate, where is the manpower to do this? Right? Because I'm a teacher, you know, we have different roles, so on and forth. But you're giving me now another responsibility, a notable responsibility. 25 kids, they all have cell phones. Okay? And, and so I think that we can do that. I was encouraged by Principal Canetta in his talking about the administrative team is ready to do that. Within the individual classroom, I think that is more feasible. And I'm a teacher, you know, teacher, it's a battle of varying degrees. But where I think we're on the right track here is if we have a policy and if we are ser, that this battle can be, can, can, can be won in the classroom, which I think what we're talking about. Okay? And frankly, having this policy and then winning this battle, which is important, which will benefit students and their academic outcomes. It will benefit students and their social, emotional outcomes. So there's benefits here to be gleaned, but it, it's, it's about how we are organizing this. And I'll go on to say that if we can win on cell phones, have a policy, have a standard, come back and enforce it, to roll this back to a reasonable and practical place where it needs to be. If we can have a victory on cell phones, then we can go forward and have a victory on other things, like dress code. And how students walk about schools through the different seasons of the year, different conversation. But I think this can be a forerunner for that. So I'm having issues with, with, with some of the language, and this idea of a, of a personal device. I'm having an issue with the students not having a time during the day, i.e. lunch, where they can use their cell phones. And then Jen talked about the parents, people in the community, people have reached out. I realize it's the summer, okay? So you're trying to get through your, you know, so everybody's not locked in on schools right now. I get that. You're going to, you know, we're going to go back and this will be more prevalent and we'll most likely hear from more parents, hear from different community stakeholder groups on this. So I'm kind of leaning, maybe we don't decide something now, but we continue to work on this. But what I am saying is that we need to also look at how this is going to be done. It can't just be the teacher. It can't just be the administrators to think that they're going to be able to have this, you know, and to, because the issue, and this is the same thing that we addressed with, this is the same thing that we, happens with, with dress code. It's can we make it universal? We can't, when, when it comes to dress code, one student can go and dress however the heck they want, and we can't enforce that, and every other student sees that and says, oh, well, they can do it, so then I can do it. That's the slippery slope that we get on. It's the same thing here. If you have one, you know, if, so it's going to, that's what's going to be required for us to, to get the victory. I'll pass it over. But classrooms, 100%, you know, instructional time, 100%, but I need better language in terms of the unstructured times and how this is going to work.
Kathy, can I just speak very briefly to the language? I think the way that was written, it said cell phones and other personal electronic devices. I mean, I think we meant that's what you own, like your Apple Watch.
Okay.
You know, your own personal electronic.
Not school issued.
Not the school issued one, yeah. And do you work in a, a school that has yonder pouches?
This will be the first year, they're going to, so that the yonder pouches.
And do you know why they're, I mean, like, is this like repeating what's happening in Barnstable? Like, like the main issue was constant distraction or, or why the yonder pouch in your school?
And again, first year in New Bedford, what I can say is that they're having this, the conversation surrounding yonder pouches in New Bedford, Brockton has, other districts have it, New Bedford, it's going to be the first year. And, you know, it's, it's not universal in terms, there's still work that's been done. I, I live here, so I'm not in New Bedford, but they've had parent meetings to inform the parents.
Why yonder pouches?
I can't speak to that specifically. All I can say relative to yonder pouches is that they're, they are working to bring everybody, you know, it's being, we're, it's, it's in process.
Mike?
Okay, well, so, thank you, everybody, for talking. Because I'll be completely honest with you, I'm usually pretty good about knowing where I'm going. In this one, I got to be honest with you, I'm literally not sure. I'm literally like, I listened to Jen and I was like, yeah, I agree with Jen. And I listened to Peter and I was like, yeah, I agree with Peter. And I listened to Andre and I was like, yeah, I agree with Andre. This is one of those ones that I honestly am not sure what I'm thinking. So I'm going to kind of have verbal diarrhea and talk it out. So to me, one of the things I think is, I'm, I think that this policy for me is, I understand when you write a policy, I get it, I understand it, I've done it. Like, I understand you want it to be general. To me, this one is kind of a little bit too, no, let me take it this way. First of all, Jen, I agree with you 100%. As a parent of four kids that went through the Barnstable school system, I, if I want to tell my kids that they have a doctor's appointment, or I want to tell them that I'm not picking them up after school and somebody else is, I want to be able to do that, period. I, I don't care what anybody tells me, that's what I want to do, I'm their parent. So I get that. And my concern, and it all sounds great, I brought it up the last meeting to the principal, was I've called the school and said, listen, I got to get a message, like they didn't bring their phone or whatever, and, listen, I got to get a message to my kid. They, my kid came home from school and I was like, so, did you get that message? No. And that was before, that was when everybody else had cell phones that day. So my concern about if you have parents that just want to contact their kids to let them know that they're taking the bus today, or they're, I don't know, one of the other nine billion things that we all contact our kids about. I'm concerned that the school district and the school is going to be overwhelmed. So kind of like you said, Andre, about the fact that they're going to get overwhelmed and my kid isn't going to know to take the bus anymore because they never got that message. And then they're going to be sitting there waiting for me to pick them up and no one ever shows up. So that, to me, is kind of a safety. And then I'm going to get a text when school gets over saying, hey, where are you? So to me, to say that they're going to have a system in place to notify kids, I could tell you that having four kids graduate from there, that it didn't work when everybody had cell phones, so it's certainly not going to work once everybody's calling and inundating the school with that phone call. So I agree with Andre as far as like, I don't agree with the fact from beginning of the day to the end of the day. I, I don't think that's necessary. I think it could be like, no, I understand, obviously, classrooms. I also agree with, okay, in the hallways, because they're cluttered enough as it is, you don't need kids wandering around, their phones bumping in, or adults wandering around, bumping into people. I also, but I do believe, why can't they take their phone out at lunch and go on their phone while they're sitting at lunch? And, and I've had people say to me, well, yeah, Mike, but they should be talking to each other. Well, you know what? That's, that ship is sailed in, in, in society. As adults, we don't do that. We don't do that. But then, on the other hand, I also think it's very valid to have, like, kids shouldn't be taking them out in class. It's also not teachers' responsibility to police that, that if some, like, some teachers have policies, you put your phone in your backpack, you don't take it out, and there's going to be. and there's gonna be some kids that take them out anyhow. And it's not for the teacher to have that battle with the kids. So I, I agree that there should be zero tolerance in the classroom. As far as the state law, the state law was very general, and if you go by the state law, 'cause I actually did a kind of a deep dive on it because I was kind of not sure what I was thinking, that us using our shoe caddies would actually be, would put us in compliance with the state law, I'm pretty sure. Um, so doing the shoe caddies would be, we've been doing those for years, years, we've been doing the shoe caddies. So, um, that, if you wanna worry about state compliance, that takes care of that. Um, I, I also think, I, I think, um, I'm not ready to vote no on this either. Um, what I would like to see is, I would like to see, I understand what kids are gonna say, but how about their parents? Have we asked the parents? And, and we've asked for input, and I agree, this is the summer. Nobody's worried about schools in the summer. That, you know, you have staff members that don't check their emails in the summer, let alone parents that are gonna check their emails during the summer. We've all checked out as of next week, or probably this week, as tryouts are starting for sports, and people are starting to wind back into the schools. Um, I also am kind of, I, I'm also confused, and is because we keep bringing up these yonder pouches, but this policy says nothing about yonder pouches. I, I believe it just says it's up to the principal, or it, it kind of sounds like, from what you're saying, Peter, and Kathy, having talked to you about this, it sounds like it's up to the principal as to what they do. So I, to me, this is setting a policy about no phones, and I'll be honest, I would have a real prob-, I, even if I could swallow this as it sits, I would have a real problem for going to yonder pouches. I, I think there's like a, a, a middle, I think there's a middle, um, that's my own personal opinion about it. Um, I've talked to people who have had yonder, of kids who have had yonder pouches in their schools, and some of them say, yeah, it's not a big deal. And other kids, you know what, I've heard tremendously, and I even Googled it on YouTube, is how do you break into a yonder pouch? It's a YouTube video. So it's not the end-all and be-all. Or I put my fake phone in the yonder pouch, and I have my real phone in my backpack. So we're spending a lot of money that we could be spending on other things for something that we're saying is gonna solve the problem, but kids, there's already YouTube videos on how to beat it. So it's not the answer, and I also agree with Jen as far as, I believe, as a parent, I, I've taught my kids when they can use their phones and when they can't. And to me, and I'm on my phone all the time, and my kids are on there all, but they know, I know, I can't be on my phone right now in a meeting. I never pick up my phone in the meeting, 'cause I know the expectations of not being on my phone in the middle of a school committee meeting.
Who called Kathy?
Uh, that was you. Um, so my thing is, because to me, if we just ban them and we don't teach kids when they can use them and when they can't, to me, they're gonna go off to college, or work, or military, or whatever they're gonna do after they graduate, and they're gonna not, they just didn't have them, period. Well, now, say they go to college, and now they've never been really like, said, no, you can't have it in the classroom, you gotta do your homework, or what, or you gotta pay attention in class, and they're gonna be in college. And i- is it our responsibility to teach them that? I think it's partly ours, and it's partly their parents. Um, but I just think that to just ban them isn't teaching the lesson, it's just making them not have access. So my suggestion personally, it was that we table this, um, 'cause I, I, I would, I would, I, I don't wanna vote on it, and if it happens to be a no vote, that means we can't bring it up for another year. So I think that this needs to continue to be worked on, and not necessarily voted down or up right now. The other question I have for this is, this policy is now, is, is, one of the things I've read it over and over and over, is this policy gonna go into effect as of tonight? So it's gonna go at, like, school starts next week, so as of next week, kids, kids can't have their phones anymore in the building? Or are we saying that we're passing this now, but we're gonna have a year of having community meetings? As I said, the last meeting, we have to have community meetings, we have to like, bring this up and, and bring it upon people, not just throwing it at them? So is this going into effect as of next Wednesday? Or is this going like, okay, we passed it, now we gotta do a lot of work to get it, to implement it for next school year? What's the thought process? There is nothing that says-
Well, Jason Canetta sent an email out saying that, yes, it would be applicable day one of school to all the parents.
So we're gonna pass a policy that says no phones, and we're putting it into effect as of next Wednesday?
I have a lot of questions, like, if we do approve-
And I would ask the policy, like, what do you guys think?
Yeah.
Like, you guys have been, you and, Peter, you and Kathy have been working on this, so I don't wanna take it, like, what are you guys thinking? Like, are you guys planning on implementing this literally in seven days?
So-
Or, or I guess maybe Sarah even, I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure who to ask, but, like, to me, like, having this major of a policy go into effect seven days before the school year starts is kind of a recipe for disaster, I would think. But I guess I would ask Sarah, what do you, what do you kind of think on it, like?
Uh, I guess, customarily, your policies go into effect once you pass them. Um, and we are at a critical juncture about, um, you know, when to put it in handbooks and how to put it in handbooks. Um, so there's been a lot of sharing of this with, uh, the administrative team. Um, but really, we would take our direction from you.
Right.
But customarily, it would go into effect right away. Um, you know, I think on a practical level, what we're talking about in terms of being different is the bell-to-bell idea at the high school. So right now, the expectation is that phones are off limits during instructional time. Um, but during passing or during lunch, students can use them and access them. So the big change is that passing time and the lunchtime. Um, from an implementation standpoint, I think some of the challenges there are, um, you know, kind of confronting students who are violating the policy during passing time or during lunch. Um, and administrators and teachers, you know, without something like a yonder pouch being in a position to, to enforce it during those times. But that's the change at the high school level. Um, pre-K to seven, um, devices are already pretty much off limits. Um, what we see, uh, at times are the smartwatches, particularly for, especially for like the younger students. Um, but, uh, we have, uh, relied on handbook language to communicate to families that, you know, the students really shouldn't be, um, disturbed during the school day. Um, so it's not a major issue, but it does come up every now and again. I think that, um, maybe the bigger change district-wide is around, um, strengthening language around staff using cellphones. Not that we have, uh, a lot of that. Um, but, um, it does set some expectations in terms of staff using it for educational purposes only.
Okay. So, 'cause I know, I know a lot of people who work in the K through three, and it's really not an issue. I know if kids brings, happens once in a while, a kid will bring a cellphone in, and they literally take it, call the parents and say, come pick it up. So this is already kind of being done at the, at the elementary level at least. I don't know about the four, five, or the six, seven, but-
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty much, there's no-
Same thing all the way through seven. So this is mainly a policy for the high school, that's really what we're talking about.
Yeah, and it, and they are currently prohibited during, um,
Classroom.
During classroom time. Although I think that, um, you know, what it comes down to is consistency of enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I think.
Uh, Mike, um, a- a- as I said, I thought this was kind of a, uh,
Yeah, more moderate.
Moderate, yeah. I'm, I'm reading this line, "The school principal will determine and publish in the school's handbook the guidelines for acceptable use of cellphones and devices in buildings."
No, and that I'm okay with. What I'm, but, but what this key conversation keeps going to is these yonder pouches.
That's me.
Okay, so that, but that's, you're scaring me, Peter.
I'm saying, I'm saying that'll fix the problem of cellphones once and for all. I've observed it, I've seen it, it works.
And I understand it, and, and I understand it, but, but, but that's not what this pol-, but my-
That's not what this policy says.
Okay, that's, that's, what I wanna clarify is that's not what this policy is saying.
There's no yonder pouch in this policy. It simply, it says, "The school principal will determine the guidelines for acceptable use." I believe the yonder pouch would be a whole separate agenda item, it would be a, a-
Budget item, it'd be everything, right.
And, um, and I won't be here past November, as I'm duly reminded quite often.
They're gonna table this till December 1st?
Yeah, yes. And, and I believe I'll be watching at home, and you'll be talking, well, I guess we need yonder pouches in, in March, April, and May.
That's from all the emails you've sent me.
I firmly believe that. So no, your, your fears are, uh, you know, yeah, could we put this in place next week? Absolutely, we can.
Oh, the, the-
100% we can.
Right.
But I don't know why we wouldn't.
This policy that, as it, as I read it, means that the principal can decide that yonder pouches are necessary, and then put forth an agenda item. It's a budget item, but nonetheless, if they determine that, uh,
But they could take money out of their budget from something else and put it in.
Yeah, I'm all set. I, I, I am not prepared to vote on it tonight, I think it needs a lot more work. Thank you. And I do appreciate the work that's been done on it, I just think it does, it's not inclusive enough for me. Thank you.
So I haven't had a chance to weigh in.
No, I'm gonna let you talk, 'cause I'm, yeah.
And Jen, I do thank you for sending something directly to the committee. Um, I can understand not receiving a lot of feedback from families during the summer. However, um, you know, for school committee members to have specific pieces of the language that they're not happy with, that definitely should have been communicated to somebody on the school committee, or Sarah, because if we don't know, we can't discuss it. Um, the other thing that I wanna say is, this clearly is not a vote for or against yonder pouches. That's, that's not it. That was something that was brought up, um, during conversation as to how, how to do the implementation. In an ideal situation, students respect the learning environment and would stay off their devices because they have respect for the purpose of the classroom, which is learning. In an ideal situation, students respect others, and they use their phones appropriately, and they don't use them for actions that would be perceived as bullying or inappropriate types of uses. Unfortunately, we don't live in this ideal situation. I remember a year ago saying, if I were sitting at home listening to this, and I sat in that auditorium, listening to the principal on the opening day, say, we are discussing a bell-to-bell ban, I would smarten up as a student and put my device away. And so here we are, one year later, back to square one with the same discussion. What we hear is that there is inconsistency, and there are problems with enforcing something that has no policy. There is no district policy. Therefore, there's no teeth for anybody to take action if phone use is being abused. And we have heard from various teachers that it is difficult, and they don't like the confrontation. Um, because with, maybe it's a, a small number, but it only takes one person to have a confrontation that can be dangerous. And so teachers hesitate. So they wanted, the, the, what I thought I heard was that we, we want a policy. And so developing this policy as broadly as could be, and even though things are getting better, there was some information provided that said people wanted a policy. Um, as far as every single member of the community being involved with policy development, that's our school committee job. So we listen to those who provide feedback, we discuss in open meetings, we discuss in the subcommittee. And we, we had long meetings, these weren't quick meetings, like, oh, so-and-so said this, so-and-so said that. We, we, we were there pretty long, just talking about cellphones. So, you know, the feedback has to come. If you speak to an individual, uh, school committee member who's not on the subcommittee, then that's the school committee member needs to notify somebody on the subcommittee. Otherwise, we're not, we're, I'm hearing some of this stuff for the first time. And I had one, I, I reached out to get the comment that was brought up vaguely at the last meeting. You know, you need to let us know what was said. My, uh, information that was provided was that a parent was concerned about extracurricular activities. Well, this is not dealing with extracurricular, this is the bell beginning the school day and the bell ending the academic school day. So, um, you know, if somebody wants to make a motion to table, and there's a second motion to table supersedes the motion on the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
I just, do you mind if I just kind of continue with the conversation?
I actually have some conversation, I'd like to continue to-
Go ahead, let's just have the conversation.
So I, I did email Sarah, I think that was the, the email that I emailed you all, yes. Um, but regarding any sort of outreach to students, was any outreach conducted with students, or people of action, or student council, or any, anything like that? Because to me, the, you know, I, I've been making policy for 13 years, 14 years now. And policies that are made without appropriate comments from diverse groups don't hold up. They're just not, they're not seaworthy. Um, and so if those groups haven't been touched and asked, and it is our responsibility as legislators, I believe, and policymakers, to reach out to those communities and ask, if those, you know, overtures haven't been made, already, I believe, there's enough of, of conversation on the committee to table it. But if those haven't been made in good faith, then I, I really, although I appreciate the subcommittee's work, we can't legislate in a vacuum. Just doesn't work that way.
So, and, and I agree, we cannot legislate in a vacuum. I, I'm concerned about making decisions to reach out to some individual groups and perhaps excluding of a group that we're not aware of. So this is an open meeting. This is information that has been brought up over a year at, at school committee meetings, and, and it's, it's not been a secret. It hasn't been a secret.
No, it's not been a secret.
But I agree, we can have more input. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, but I'm just saying, think about the number of organizations. And we can't decide which ones of those.
And I agree with you 1,000%. So what I've always been a, a, a big proponent of is, is a survey. Send out a Survey Monkey to all the parents in the district, and let them fill out the survey. That, that, you're not hitting one specific group, you're hitting all parents, and send another one out to all staff, 'cause this is a-
Staff, yeah, it's a survey.
But, but the entire district?
The entire district staff.
Okay, so that was done, so, but-
So people of action?
Send out to the entire family, the entire family.
We cannot-
No, and I agree, you can't stop picking, choosing your groups.
We can't just pick and choose a group.
Okay, so, but their mentors in the school, so they're employees at the school.
That's right, but they're in the school, so they were-
And so they're employees.
So did they receive a, a survey?
Yes, they should have, because the surveys were distributed.
The survey was distributed to anyone with a MyBPS address, and the community mentors as employees would have that. Um, so they would have received it.
I'm not convinced that this is a thorough enough deep dive in, in getting all the opinions that we need at the table to formulate policy that allows one person to make a bell-to-bell stoppage on all cellphone use. I just cannot support that.
One person isn't making it.
The principal.
The principal.
Right?
Well, the principal is deciding how to implement. If it's a bell-to-bell, it's the, this policy.
Right, I'm saying, so if we pass this policy, one person makes a decision.
But we have a motion to table on the floor.
Nobody seconded it?
I know, I'm waiting.
Second.
So with a motion made and seconded to table the vote-
Can we still have discussion?
We can have discussion.
Okay, so my point on that is, I also don't think, and I could be wrong, but I'm pretty darn sure I'm not, is you're not talking about every child taking out their phone during class. I think you're, you're talking about a very small group that is disruptive, probably disruptive in other ways, other than just their cellphone. And therefore, my problem with this, five years ago, when this came up, and I was getting beaten, beaten up about not putting it on the agenda. My point was, if 90% of the kids are following the rules, why can't they use it at lunch? So because there's 10% that can't follow the rules that we have, or put it away when the teacher says so, or don't disrupt the classroom with it, that's not every kid, say it's 10%, I think it's probably even less, but we'll give it 10%. That means those people should be punished to not be able to use it at lunch. Those people should not be able to use it and contact their parents. Those, they should have absolutely ramifications for their actions. But why are the 90% of the kids who are following the rules, who use it when it's appropriate, why are those kids now not gonna be able to take it out and use it at lunch? Like, and that was my complaint, and no one could answer that question for me. Why is it, and even when I was, the people I was getting beaten up by, I was like, how many, what's the percentage of kids that are actually out of control and, and won't put it away when you tell it? And they're like, oh, not very often, it's, it's, it's not something that happens every day in every class by any means. And I was like, okay, so give me a, give me a number. And they didn't wanna give me a number. So really, what it came down was a small amount of kids are gonna ruin it for everybody. And to me, what you should do is, and, and the administration, it, to me, is doing it. They weren't, the last administration wasn't, but this administration is holding kids that are, that are disruptive accountable. And therefore, what is wrong with that? That's the way it should be. The kids who are not doing anything wrong should be able to use it at lunch.
I'll go back to, uh, remind you that, uh, the staff-
I'll go back to remind you that the staff last summer, right before school ended last summer, asked us for help dealing with cellphones. Asked us, the school committee, for help. This is not, you know, this is not a small group of kids on their cellphone. The staff asked us to do something. And so a year later, Jason gave us the surveys over the summer, last summer. This is the number one thing they asked for help in. So it's not a little problem. One year later, how have we helped them?
Well, didn't he speak to that? And when we talked about the cellphones and the way we, you know, he was communicating with the staff, providing support when he needed it, he had positive feedback. He said that we, you know, right now, maybe we're not ready for the yonder pouch, I recall, or something along those lines. He talked about mitigating that problem. So, you know, he hadn't yet begun his tenure at Barnstable High when that problem was...
And they said for the new incoming administration, the number one problem is cellphones. And the administration's been in there for a year and we have helped them.
And it's addressed, he's addressed it.
Sarah hired Jason as the principal and he had, I believe, I believe, my personal opinion from what I've heard and what Jason has come up and talked about, and I haven't gotten any emails from any staff saying that he was up here lying, it's gotten better. It's gotten a lot better than it was last summer. So I believe we're heading in the right direction. Do we maybe eventually have to go there? Maybe. But I don't believe we plateaued on how good things are going. And I do believe we need a policy. I do be, so that gives Jason and his administrative team more bite to put in there that it's a school, it's a school district policy that there's no cellphones in the classrooms during academic time. We don't even have a policy that says that, and he's already making great strides. And we didn't even have that as a policy. As of right now, our policy is, kids can use them in the classroom. So I think, to me, this is kind of overreach for where we're at. If we want to do a policy that says that there is, reaffirm what we all believe, that there are no phones in the academic classroom or during hallway pastime, I would be 100% supportive of that. But that and this are two different, this is way further down the road than that. So I, that's my two cents on it.
Yeah, for me, it was noted, and I just want to provide clarification, that the policy committee has been meeting and they're looking for feedback from the community and to kind of contact the policy committee that works hard, assuming the policy subcommittee. There's a number of subcommittees that are working hard in between meetings on a number of different things. And so sometimes you're not able to speak vis a vis a direct email to that individual, but, you know, motions can be amended. So we're having the conversation right now. So if we, now, I'm for tabling this and then being proactive. You asked me about New Bedford, okay? New Bedford had a community meeting specifically about cellphones. Again, it happened at the end of the year, so it's the summer, you can use that, but they let people know as last school year was ending, okay, this is what we're doing. I'm not there in the summer, couldn't go to this meeting. People that wanted to attend could attend, so at least they have that runway now as school starts next week. I think that's what we need here in Barnstable as well. During the school year, when people are engaged, anybody can come out, say this, that, and the third. That information can be utilized. I've brought up my things grammatically, and I just want to make, we could, not that that's what we're going to do now, but within a motion, you can amend something and then vote on what's been amended. But for me, I think, let's table it and let's be proactive. I'm ready to meet in September. Have the meeting, I'll be there, the workshop, whatever you want to call it. Anybody, get it out there so people know. And then, whether it might be tough for September because our meeting is going to be in a week, but certainly for October, we can come back and I think we should have a policy because it's, the policy needs to be practical and it needs to be enforceable.
I have a point of information before we can move the question. I just want everybody to hear what Jason Canetta wrote to all the parents. I have the email here because it speaks to a specific cellphone policy. It says, "Cellphone and homework policy. Currently, Barnstable High School follows a cellphone policy that prohibits students from using their devices in the classroom during instructional time. As you know, this Wednesday, we expect to finalize our district cellphone policy through our school committee and plan to enforce our new policy starting Day One, which is next Wednesday, August 27th. As of right now, our current policy prohibits cellphone/smartwatch use in the classroom. In addition, using your personal technology to video, take pictures, or record audio of others in classrooms, restrooms, hallways, or any other area of school campus or school-sponsored events is strictly prohibited." So there is a policy that is being sent out to parents. Just so you know, I, so I think moving the question's appropriate.
Yeah, let's move the question.
All right.
Second.
The question had, you don't need a second. The second, the question has been moved. All in favor of tabling the vote on the policy?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. So the motion is tabled three to one. All right.
You're not going to vote that?
I don't need to vote, but, so I would vote, I would vote no, only because...
Just so you're on the record.
Because I was on the record. So three to two. And then I do urge people to make sure that if you want specific language changes, you've got to give us some specific language changes. And yes, we can wordsmith at a school committee meeting, but if we can do some of the work and come up with something better, it prevents more wordsmithing.
Yeah, it prevents this, yeah.
So we have, now we have item 3.2, Create Policy IKB, the homework policy. To frame this, the subcommittee reviewed and discussed feedback received and determined that the policy as presented during the July meeting needed no changes. Again, this policy is written with broad language so that handbooks can contain additional language regarding the specific amounts of and the accountability for homework. And most of the concern was, how is this going to be graded? Well, that's not a school committee decision. So again, the policy was written broadly with suggested times as a framework and that's this, all I have to say.
Make a motion to, make a motion to create, move to create policy IKB homework as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Discussion. Jen?
Yes, I support this policy and I especially support it because it came from the students, you know. Our envoys came up and told us that they thought that would be a prudent thing to put in place. So for me, it's very circumspect. It includes both sides and it makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Peter?
No, it's a great policy. I'm all for it.
Andre?
Yeah, I support this policy and I like that we have included the elementary grades with reasonable numbers, you know, 10 minutes, first, second, third grade. Listen, I was doing more than 10 minutes. I'm reminded of when I was watching Alf, you know, which came on eight o'clock, but I had homework. I had homework before we were watching those great shows in the 80s when I was wearing my Oskar's bagage. But the point is, you know, that, you know, it is good, it's a very good habit, and I think this speaks to what I firmly believe and what other committees members have spoken to, is our high achieving students that are looking from, you know, they want to be challenged. And so starting in the elementary levels, I'm really in favor of that and going into middle school. And I like the cap that we have in the high school at two hours so that teachers can sometimes collaborate, right? Because there is the other side of it for those high achieving students, they're taking a number of AP or honors classes. Sometimes they're overburdened with busy work and data shows they don't retain any of that. They don't retain any of that. So I think it's good at the high school that we have these safety measures in place to make sure that it's, they're retaining the information that they're studying at home.
Mike?
I, yeah, this is fine. And I, actually, I like the thing at the bottom that says gateway honors and AP classes may require additional hours because I think it's just, this is getting ready, we're supposed to get kids ready for career and, career in college and you need to learn time management and that's like, that's what it's kind of all about when you go to college or career. So I think this is perfect. It kind of spells it out and puts, nobody can say, oh, I didn't know if I took six AP courses, I was going to get more than two hours of homework a night or whatever the case may be. So I like the bottom part that kind of spells it out, that if you're taking the harder courses, you're probably going to get more workload and that's the way it goes. So it's perfect. Thank you for your work.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate that somebody did mention it is progressive, starting at 10 minutes one night and building up. Obviously, if it's a new policy, my expectation or my guess would be that if you haven't had a policy in place, you may not be able to start at the intermediate grades with recommended amount. And so again, it gives the flexibility to the buildings, to the teachers, where it should be. And hopefully, our students are going to become better students and better prepared and will see that result in their achievement. All right, any other discussion? All right, a motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. New business. Item 4.1, Approved Director of Food Services Job Description. Sarah?
Thank you. So looking through our human resources records, we do not have a job description for the director of food services. So we created a new one and it is in your packet, looking for your approval.
I'm going to make the motion.
Motion?
Yeah. Move to approve the director of food services job description as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 5.1, Finance and Facilities, Approved Signing Bonus for Bus Drivers. Sarah?
So Sandy Gifford put this proposal forward for your consideration in the past. We haven't had huge success, but we had signed two bus drivers with this incentive. And so given that we are short-staffed in terms of bus drivers, we want to extend an incentive for new candidates. It would be a $1,500 sign-on bonus for non-licensed candidates, $500 paid upon getting licensed to drive the school bus, and the remainder 1,000 after six months of continued employment in good standing. And for those who have CDL licenses, it would be a $2,000 sign-on bonus, broken out as $500 paid upon getting licensed, and the remainder at 1,500 after six months of continued employment, as they require fewer hours of training and get licensed faster and they already have the CDL. All trainees would get 20 hours a week of paid training at the monitor pay rate if we cannot use them as a bus monitor while they are training.
All right. Any discussion? Jen? Peter? Andre?
Yeah, I'm strongly in favor and I just want to commend to Sandy, Sarah for this. I know bus drivers in the district, they've reached out to me and talked about this and said they appreciate it. And as I've noted before, you know, I think, you know, with the seasonal nature of our economy, you know, and with young people that have times of unemployment, you know, being a bus driver, getting your CDL license, first of all, it's just good, if you want to drive a bus, you know, you can do, there's other things that you can do with it. So I'm interested, you know, that young, you know, that, you know, people, maybe younger, maybe 20s, 30s, can see this and, you know, drive for us, but then also get the CDL license, you know, it opens up so many doors. So I think, great job, you know, with all concerned with this.
Mike?
No, I'm all set.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. Item 5.2, Approve Accounts Payable Warrant Fiscal Year 26, warrant number eight.
Move to approve Accounts Payable Warrant FY 26, warrant number eight, in the amount of $273,836.17.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Consent Agenda, Items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3. Tonight's consent agenda includes the approval of school committee meeting minutes of July 23, 2025, the approval of school committee workshop meeting minutes of July 30, 2025, and the approval of the fiscal year 26 grants, gifts, and donations.
Move to approve the items in consent agenda as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Executive Session. Move to go into executive session to reconvene in open session to approve the school committee executive session minutes of June 4, 2025, June 18, 2025, and July 14, 2025, and for a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Kim Stolosky. Having a motion made and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Jen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And we're now in executive session.[1528.04] Okay. So, we're now back in open session, and we are on item, get my number out, 8.1, approve the employment contract for interim Director of Special Education.
Move to approve a one-year employment contract for the interim Director of Special Education, Kim Stolosky, beginning on July 1, 2025, with a base salary of $145,000 and other terms as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and-
Discussion.
Having a motion made and seconded. I've got to think about this for a minute. I'm not sure we can have discussion about, which is why we went into executive session. This is a personnel matter, and the discussion was held in executive session, and a vote was taken in executive session. And I remind people that the vote is just being presented formally in open session.
Discussion.
There is no discussion.
There is no discussion. Just so the community is aware, we're running the risk of being out of order. There's discussion after the second of every single motion. What you can discuss during the discussion, there's certain parameters on what you can discuss during the discussion. But to say that there's not discussion, that violates the fundamental principles of Robert's Rules of Order. There's always discussion after a motion.
Point of order. Move the question. That ends discussion.
There's discussion after the second of every single motion. What you can discuss during the discussion, there's certain parameters on what you can discuss during the discussion. But to say that there's not discussion, that violates the fundamental principles of Robert's Rules of Order. There's always discussion after a motion.
Point of order. Move the question. That ends discussion.
Is there a second on moving the question? Discussion on moving the question?
So, again, folks, am I allowed?
Andre?
Thank you, Chair. So right now, we have a motion on the floor to limit the discussion on this agenda item.
Point of order. We have a motion on the floor to move the question. You may speak in favor of or against moving the question.
The community be aware, I'm against moving the question because there was information that I had relative to the motion that I would like to share. Hopefully, my fellow committee members will be in support of free speech and the opportunity to voice one's opinion, consistent with Robert's Rules of Order. Again, as an unpaid volunteer here, this is what we sign up to do, regardless of what the discussion is. So, again, that's where we are, moving the question to limit discussion. I'm not, I'm not for it at all.
All right. So is there any more discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
No. Oh, yeah. Do a roll call?
Oh, roll call vote, I'm sorry. Jen? Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
No, we have to now vote on the motion.
Oh, now we're mo, that's a motion to move the question. So now we're voting on-
The actual motion.
The actual motion to approve the contract as the motion was stated and seconded. Having a motion made and seconded. Roll call vote. Jen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.